Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start the meeting. If you would rise, please, for a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, the state, one nation, under God, in the civil, liberty, and justice of all. Please be seated. Welcome to the Township of Oldbridge Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, May 1, 2025. Adequate notice to this meeting of the Oldbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing such announcement with the municipal clerk, and finally posting the agenda on the municipal website. Vice Secretary Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier? Absent. Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Ms. Gomez? Absent. Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Mr. Singh, you'll be voting tonight as alternate one to fill the seven. Just a couple announcements. This meeting is being televised on OBTV, the local TV network here in the township on Channel fifteen. Simultaneously, this meeting is also being put on YouTube Live. If you ever need to refer back, you can find this meeting on that channel. The rules of the board are that testimony stops at ten, the meeting goes till ten thirty, and we allow the last half hour for any public comment. Tonight, I will announce that the first application has been adjourned late this afternoon, so that's not going to be on. So, we have two applications this evening. It's going to leave us the best part of two hours and a half, so we'll try and be fair to each other. I don't know that you're going to need all the time, but at some point after the first one, I'm going to make sure we split even time up until ten o'clock, so everyone knows that. A couple housekeeping items, and then, board, we're going to move to the minutes. We have one. Minutes of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to look at them. Absent any kind of comments, I would ask someone to move them for adoption.
Move it, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it was Mr. Izzo. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. We have a couple resolutions this evening, and before I read them in, I did make mention that one of the applications is open, in fairness, in case you're just sitting here on that application, I'm going to read it into the record that it has been carried. It's sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four Z eleven oh three Route thirty-five LLC. That's block two four lot one one zero zero, physical location eleven oh three Highway thirty-five. They're seeking an appeal of the zoning officer's denial. That matter has been adjourned. Public hearing will continue June fifth without further notification. If you hear on that matter on Route thirty-five, it's not going to be on the agenda this evening. June fifth, no further notice. All right, that brings me back to the resolutions. We'll start. Twenty-one dash twenty twenty-four Z Renaissance at Oldbridge LLC was major preliminary and final site plan with a design waivers and C variants. Mr. Dusty.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. This resolution memorializes an approval of modifying an existing building that's, the footprint won't change. The applicant's come in and asked for that, the twenty-six hundred square feet, which is currently a showroom, be utilized now for office accessory space. The condition is it will not be medical use. There's a variance for the existing parking lot, number of parking spaces. There's one hundred ninety-one, and our ordinance would require two seventeen, but the applicant's expert, Mr. Kenny, testified that the type of uses, different tenants, there's a shared parking space situation where not all the tenants are there at the same time to share the spaces. So, it's a preliminary and final site plan for that purpose and a C variance, and there's a few design waivers that are referenced in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Dusty. Board members referred the resolution. Someone move it for adoption, please.
Andrews, move it.
Second, Scogno.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Zero one dash twenty twenty-five Z Matthew and Christine Bradley. It was a C variance. Again, Mr. Dusty.
Thank you. This is a property at four-two-eight-four Highway five-one-six. It is a request of an addition to an existing single-family residence, which is a permitted use in the zone. The increase would be about five hundred seventy-two square feet. The applicants want to complete the home so that it has two and a half baths and another bedroom for the children's playroom. The home currently is eleven hundred thirty-nine square feet. It would go to seventeen hundred and eleven square feet, and the home was built before the zoning ordinances, which created the pre-existing nonconformities, which required the new variance approval.
Thank you, Counselor. Board members, someone move that for adoption? Izzo? Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Zero five dash twenty twenty-five Z. It's Jabby Javref Lakon. It was a C variance. Mr. Dusty, once again.
I compliment you, Chairman, on pronouncing that name. This house is at sixty-two Gazania Drive. The applicant is requesting a variance for, in part, to allow construction of a six-foot vinyl fence in part of the front of the building and also to construct an eight-by-ten pergola in the front of the home. The pergola will be at least three feet off the side of front yard. In terms of the setback requirements, there was a lot of discussion about the easement. There's a four-foot wide easement, utility easement, in front of the home, and the applicant agreed that the proposed fence will not impede on that easement. It'll be closer to the house than the easement off the street. You might recall that the HOA letter we received originally was not real specifics, so we spoke with the HOA people, and they have now submitted to us a bona fide letter on their letterhead confirming they have no opposition, and that'll be part of the file.
Board members, that's to your satisfaction. I guess everyone got a copy of that letter that will become part of the permanent record. Without objection, someone move that for adoption?
Move it, Scogno.
Second?
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We come to item five on our agenda. That's a swearing of the professionals tonight. We have two. I think a third one might be showing, I'm not sure. We have Ryan McCarthy, who's professional engineer, Venus Savant, professional planner. We're moving on. Application, the first one to be heard is forty-nine dash twenty twenty-four Z. It's Outfront Media LLC. It's in the CC commercial block one-nine-zero-one-three, lot six-point-one-one. Physical location's fourteen forty-nine Highway eighteen, Oldbridge. It's a multi-message sign, major preliminary and final site plan with D variance. Applicant seeks approval to construct and operate a monopole multi-message sign consisting of two twenty-five-point-two times eighteen-by-nine faces totaling nine hundred and fifty-two square foot with an overall height above grade of twenty-five feet. Is it Matthew Weiss?
Yes.
Matthew Weiss representing the applicant, sir.
Matthew Weiss, Price, Meacham, and Dermineo, on behalf of the applicant. So, just to clarify something, Chairman, this is, I apologize, this is on us. In the application, there was a typo in the description of the sign, size and height. The notice is correct. I can, you know, if the board wants to see it, I have that. The application itself, everywhere else says that, and the plans are correct. It's just that one line in the application is wrong.
I understand. You're going to put it on the record of one of your professionals.
Yes.
And we'll have the professionals.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that was cleared up right away. So, this is fourteen forty-nine Route eighteen South, block one-nine oh one-three, lot six-point-one-one. It's in the community commercial district. Outfront, as the chairman said, is proposing to construct and operate a single pole double-faced outdoor advertising sign showing, of course, to Route eighteen. It's a multi-message LED off-premise advertising sign billboard. Outfront leases the property from Bentley Realty Group. There's a Duncan on the property as well. Outfront has a state permit from NJ DOT for this multi-message billboard. We have that with us. We will show you that later, and Outfront will, of course, be constructing and operating the sign. Billboards are conditionally permitted in the CC zone. I'm sure the board is aware. However, Outfront is here seeking a D-three variance, a conditional use variance, because it does not meet one of the conditions for permission, which is the distance from the residential zone. The requirement is five hundred feet, and Outfront's sign will be about two hundred and thirty feet away from the zone line. Two other notes. Outfront is going to agree right up front here, and you'll hear this testimony from them as well in a minute, that they will do thirty-second ad flips, which is the requirement. So, the plan does say eight seconds. We will amend the plan as a condition of approval, but the application is going to be for thirty-second ad flips, so it will meet that requirement. Additionally, this is on the plan, but just want to make sure it's highlighted that we will turn off the sign at eleven PM, which is also a requirement.
What time does it go on?
That's not in the code, so if the board would like to, as a condition of approval, tell us what time to turn the sign back on, we, of course, will consider that.
We'll take the suggestion of the professional planner when that comes around.
Understandable. Thank you. So, the sign is going to be ten and a half by thirty-six feet. The actual, that's the, what we call the nominal size. The panels that make up the sign are not exactly that size, so the actual size is going to be ten and a half feet by thirty-six-point-two-two feet, and it's a horizontal sign, so the thirty-six feet is the longer side, right to left, and it's going to be thirty-seven and a half feet tall. I know, and we'll address this with our engineer, there was a question about the height as well. There's a typo in one spot on the plan that says thirty-five. Everywhere else, it says thirty-seven and a half, and we will, of course, correct that as well. You're going to hear tonight from three people, ideally. John Antal from Outfront Media, he is their general manager. William Vote is our engineer, and George Williams is our planner. So, Mr. Dusty, I'd like to get John Antal's word.
What we'd like to do is swear in all three of your witnesses now, and they can identify themselves as they come in to testify. Gentlemen, would you all raise your right hand? Do you all swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? So, we go.
I do.
I will certainly do.
We'll start on the left. Do identify yourself, please.
Sure. Good evening. William Harvote Jr., the civil engineer from L two A Land Design LLC.
Just spell your last name, sir.
It's V as in Victor. O like orange, G like girl, T like Tom.
Thank you, sir.
And I prepared the site plan as part of the application.
Sir?
John Antal, A-N-T-A-L, general manager, Outfront, New Jersey.
And sir?
And last but not least, good evening. Commissioner's George Weedle Williams, Williams with an S, issuing group of planning consultancy in Montclair, representing Outfront.
Thank you, sir. Counselor?
Thank you. Mr. Antal, can you provide the board with the benefit of your background and experience?
Yes. So, as I stated, my name is John Antal. I'm the general manager for Outfront Media, New Jersey. I have been in the outdoor advertising business for twenty-two years, all with Outfront and its predecessor companies, and I've been the general manager for the New Jersey operation since two thousand and twelve. As far as my duties and responsibilities, I oversee all departments and divisions with regards to the daily operations here in our territory in New Jersey, and as it relates to the application before you tonight, I oversee the development of new billboard locations. For those of you who aren't familiar with Outfront Media itself, we are a national advertising company, and we are traded under the symbol O U T on the New York Stock Exchange. Here in New Jersey, we've been doing business as Outfront or its predecessor company since the nineteen forties. We operate over thirty-five-hundred displays throughout New Jersey, a hundred and six of which are digital billboards like the application before you tonight. We have been operating digital billboards in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and nine and in Oldbridge Township since two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you. I'm going to show you what I'm pre-marking P one. I'm going to ask Mr. Cuss to hand this out as well. Maureen, this is aerial exhibit Rev. two, if you want to put it on the screen.
We're going to label it A one, is that right?
A one. That is how I have it labeled as well, Mr. Dusty. Thank you. So, while Mr. Cuss is handing this out, Mr. Antal, what am I showing you that's pre-marked A one?
A one is an aerial view of the property highlighted in a red outline. It's, you know, as mentioned, it's, the location is fourteen forty-nine on Route eighteen South, just to the south of, well, more than just, about a thousand feet south of Maple Street. As mentioned, this is the property where we are the lessee, and there is also a Duncan on the location.
What is the area and zone around the property?
Well, the area and zone, the property itself is the community commercial district. The area in the immediate vicinity is commercial in nature.
Great. Okay. And why did Outfront choose this site?
Exactly for those reasons. Being in the community commercial district, the use is permitted. Our proximity to Route eighteen, where we can orient the sign to traffic visible from that traveling roadway, and again, the area is commercial in nature, and we can locate the sign on the property without any interference to the normal operations of the business that is already located there.
Great. Okay. I am now going to show you what I'm pre-marking A two. Maureen, that is the permit. Yes, permit. Let's just give Mr. Cuss a second to hand this out before we get into it.
Thank you. Should we take one? Thank you. So, what you have before you is the permit approval letter from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. This letter was issued in May of two thousand and twenty-two. Every year since then, we have renewed this permit in accordance with the state, and most recently, it was renewed again for May for another year. This is signifying that our application being approved by the New Jersey Department of Transportation shows that we can locate and construct this billboard to meet all New Jersey Department of Transportation requirements, including all of the rigorous safety review concerns that they go through during that process and as required by their regulatory bodies. So, having this letter and having the permit in place shows that we meet all of the abilities the DOT requires to construct, operate, and maintain the sign in a safe manner in accordance with their regulations.
One small thing. At the bottom there, it says forty-eight by fourteen, back-to-back multi-message. I don't know if you reviewed the report that came out today, Mr. Antal. Did you? I shouldn't assume.
I did not.
Okay. Well, let me show you something in it then. So, I'm turning to page six of the report from Nicole Shapiro and Venus Savant today. So, C number three here, under A.
Yes.
I'm just going to read a sentence to you. The NJ DOT permit states approval for forty-eight by fourteen, back-to-back multi-message sign. There was a little confusion understandably about that versus our sign size, which is, of course, ten and a half by thirty-six. Can you explain the discrepancy there?
Yes. So, when you make an application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation, you can apply for any size sign up to a thousand square feet. In this case, when we initially made our original application, our thought was to possibly have a fourteen by forty-eight sized sign at the location, which is similar to the signs you would find on Route nine. However, upon further investigation of the site and further review of our professionals, we felt that a smaller-sized sign that's before you tonight, ten and a half by thirty-six, is actually more appropriate for the location and still accomplishes what we're trying to do by orient to Route eighteen. So, we are able to operate that size sign under the existing permit because we're permitted for more square footage than we need, but our application tonight is for a smaller-sized sign than the DOT would allow us to have on the location.
So, just to be clear, DOT does not require a new permit if you make a smaller sign than what's approved?
They do not. They just require that you, whatever you're operating, is at that size or smaller.
Thank you. Okay. I'm now going to show you what I've pre-marked A three. Those are, that's fourteen forty-nine Route eighteen, Maureen? Yes, the top one. And while Mr. Cuss hands this out, you could just review that for me? Okay. Very briefly, while he's finishing this, what is this?
So, A three consists of seven pages, including the cover, and what you have before you is our visual representation of the site as it exists today, as well as what we anticipate the future site to be. We consider, we call these renderings or simulations. The process of coming up with these simulations involves us bringing a bucket truck with a wooden panel attached to the bucket to the location, putting it so it is in the place where we will have the billboard face. We raise the bucket with the wooden panel, and it allows us to scale out the images that are before you in an appropriate fashion, so we're not guessing at the dimensions. We know where it's going to be. We know the size it's going to be, so that we can have a visual, accurate visual representation of how the site will look in its future state.
Great. So, why don't you take the board through this page by page?
Sure. So, obviously, the cover page lists all of the date from when the photos were taken, as well as, you know, our era engineer who took the photos and the creative services team that created the images themselves. The first photo in the package, there are the first three photos in the packet are for the southbound side of the sign, so this is traveling south on eighteen. The first image, you'll see the bucket truck with the panel raised. This is how we oriented ourselves to the location and allowed us to complete the other photos that you're going to see. The second photo is a watermark or a translucent version of the billboard itself, and we did this in order to show the board that the size is accurate, that when you match up the panel with the size of the billboard that's being proposed, you can see that we did scale it appropriately. And then, the third photo is that billboard in a solid image, as if it were there today, with the bucket truck photoshopped out, so you can get a more, I'll say, clear view of what we expect it to look like in the future state. When we go to the last three pages, it's the same order of operation, but we have it for the northbound side, and with the northbound, obviously, there are currently trees at that location. I believe a shopping plaza is approved to be built at that location, so at some point in the future, we do expect those trees to be removed from that approval. So, you can see that we have the first simulation is the approach as it is today. The second includes that translucent billboard, and the third, we did our best to represent what we believe the potential future state would be. Obviously, not knowing exactly what that plaza is going to look like eventually, we just kind of took out the trees so that you could see where the billboard is expected to be plotted on our property, as well as its proximity to the building in the background there.
Thank you. So, how do the digital signs work?
So, as we mentioned, or as Matt mentioned earlier, the ads themselves will change every thirty seconds, same as the billboard that we operate on Route nine currently today in the township. Those changes are instantaneous. There's no fading in and out. There's no wavering. There's no flashing. We're governed by the Department of Transportation in that manner. The ad changes have to be instantaneous between the ads as they cycle through.
And very quickly, sorry, what would happen if Outfront violated a, any regulation of DOT?
We run the risk of our permit, as well as our license, being revoked by the Department of Transportation. So, not just this location, but our actual operating license could be revoked.
Thank you. Keep going.
In accordance with the municipal requirements, we are turning off the sign at eleven o'clock as required, and, you know, these signs, not just this location, but all the locations we operate, are monitored both by a computer on location, as well as a camera for remote viewing and monitoring of its, I'll say, maintenance and knowing that it's functioning correctly. From a maintenance standpoint, since I mentioned it, we would anticipate being at this location approximately four times a year for routine maintenance and inspection, but other than that, you know, there's not much reason to be there on site. This isn't like a traditional billboard where you physically have to change every single ad. That's really one of the things that, as an operator, is a benefit to us because we don't have kind of that constant interaction with the sign itself, people climbing the sign, having to go through that process to change the ad every time we do it. So, having that ability to do things remotely and to change the message over a secure internet connection, you know, negates the requirement for us to be there on-site as frequently as a traditional billboard would have us be there. you know, negates the the requirement for us to be there on-site as frequently as a traditional billboard would have us be there. The the digital nature of these signs isn't just a benefit for us as an operator, but also it's a benefit for our advertisers and our clients. This is really allowing our clients to have timely and relevant messaging. I think, since it's located on a Duncan, that's an example I can give, where they can have hot coffee on a cold day, they can show the cold drinks on a hot day, they could have a breakfast sandwich during breakfast time, and, you know, a shot of espresso for the afternoon. So it's it's really allowing our advertisers to to use their ability to convey with their messages and their offerings to the traveling public in a much more relevant manner. From a municipality standpoint and from a community governance standpoint, we have the ability to provide public service and emergency messaging to both our municipal partners as well as our our public service partners throughout the day, the evening, whenever the billboard is in operation, unused, we have the ability to provide that space to people who may need it for their for their benefit.
So I'm handing you what I've premarked A4. This is public benefit examples, Old Bridge, the very last one. While Mr. Cuss hands this out, please just review that packet for me.
So as it's being handed out, I'll I'll briefly describe it. A4 consists of 13 pages, including the cover. There are three sections to to this exhibit. The first being the emergency messaging. Some examples we've provided in the packet include FBI missing person alerts as well as Amber Alerts. You know, these are the emergent messaging that need to be broadcast to a large audience for urgent action. The second section involves public service announcements. These are groups and organizations, obviously, that need public support in order to further their cause. A couple of examples of that would be the Make-A-Wish Foundation, as well as the Boys and Girls Clubs in New Jersey. And the third and final section of this is municipal announcements. An example in the first page is from Denville, New Jersey, where they've utilized the sign to promote their downtown, where they talk about various offerings as well as their ranking as a great downtown in the county. That being said, we do currently work with Old Bridge Township on our existing signs on Route 9. And I've included a couple of creatives that have recently run for the township. And as part of what we do with our municipal partners, at their request, we provide a recap, an annual recap, of the time that they've used the sign. That's been included in the last, on page 11, 12, and 13 of the packet. So it it allows you to see not just the amount of time that the township has used on the signs, but also the various messaging that's been conveyed to the traveling public on the signs as well. So it's a nice little recap for the township to share with with people who who are interested in finding out more about what they've used the signage for.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to now show you what I've premarked A5. This is Protocol A. Mr. Cuss is going to hand out the next two exhibits at the same time, but we're going to take them one at a time.
Yeah, so A5 that's being handed out kind of echoes back to A4 because how do you get all, you know, those things on the sign? Well, these are the protocols that we provide our municipal partners so that they can enact these in a time of need. Protocol A is the emergency protocol. Again, this protocol is used for highly emergent messaging, such as evacuations or homeland security items. You know, these aren't, you know, your routine traffic slowdowns and and things like that. These are really highly urgent messaging. When the need arises for this, we have provided a 24-hour hotline to be used by the township's designee, whether that's somebody from the OEM or the police department. They would make a call to the hotline, they would say, here's the issue, here's what we need displayed on the billboard. Our team would create it and display it on the billboard within a matter of minutes. That message would override any other advertising until that emergency has passed. So the township is able to use that as it's needed for the amount of time needed to make sure that nobody is, you know, traveling toward a bridge that's out, that there's, you know, an evacuation notice that's urgent for people to to get out of a flood zone, things of that nature. So that would be Protocol A and how it's used.
Okay, so now I'm going to show you what I've premarked A6. This is Protocol B. Can you explain to the board what this is?
Yeah, and Protocol B, what you have in front of you, is kind of the other side of that coin. We talked about the emergency messaging, this is the public service messaging, the municipal announcement messaging. This messaging, again, Old Bridge Township is already utilizing this, so we have this process already in place with the township. The the township reaches out to us, they say, hey, we've got an event coming up, or hey, we have, you know, this this type of thing we need to promote with the with the public, be, you know, heater safety, make sure you, you know, empty out your fireplace when you're done with it, things like that. So once we have the information from our contacts, if they don't have the ability to create the message themselves, we create it on their behalf, and we display it on the billboard as times available on the sign. And we just change it as needed by the township.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments for the board?
Only thing I would say is, you know, I I mentioned, you know, Outfront, we're on the stock exchange, we're this big national company, but we're we're a local company, too. I mean, we have two offices, one in Fairfield, New Jersey, one in Lakewood, New Jersey. You know, we've, again, we've been operating a sign like, you know, like this in the town for for over 10 years. So we we have experience in this, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Mr. Antal. Mr. Watt, or you have anything?
I don't have any questions.
I just had one, I guess, quick question. Do you have a copy of the the current permit for this location? I know that, just looking at this one, it says that it expires May of 2023.
Yeah, as I stated, we've renewed it every year, so the letter is not issued every year. It comes in a permit run. We we can provide that.
Yeah, I think it would probably be beneficial just as a condition of approval.
Sure.
Should the board act.
Do you have a a copy of a section of it? I can just, we'll we'll provide the whole thing. It's a very large file, but I can just show you the small things that you see, you know, that we have the.
Yeah, I I don't think we have to get into the semantics of it. I think just just so long, if if the board acts favorably, we would just request that it be submitted just as a condition of approval.
Anything else, Mr. McCarthy? I'm going to go to the board members on my left, I'm going to start with Mr. Singh, if you have any questions of this witness. I'll work right up.
Do you know when the time and day you took these photos?
I'd not take them.
I've never seen this road, this empty, I don't know. It's a very heavy road.
Our engineer will attest to it.
We've got people turning off of Maple, turning off of Route 18. It's it's a very dangerous road. So you have, you don't know when it was taken, what time?
I believe it was around 10:30 or 11 o'clock in the morning. And I will say that our engineer can tell you the process he used to take those photos. But I I will tell you that there was no traffic when he took those photos.
Anything else, Mr. Skagga?
No, thank you.
Come across on this side. Mr. Andrews, Mr. Testaverde. You're going to have someone speak about the brilliance or the light, the ambient lighting? That's going to come up later, right?
Yes, the engineer is coming next.
I'll hold my, I'll hold my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I presume there's no cost to the township for either the emergency or non-emergency notices?
No, there is no cost to the township.
Now, I don't know if it's for your engineer, Mr. Weiss, or this. Do you have a copy of the review letter dated today for Mr. Watt?
We do, yes.
Any issues with the recommendations that are in the letter?
I think our engineer and planner will address the recommendations.
All right.
We have no further questions for Mr. Antal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call Mr. Vogt next. Okay, Mr. Vogt, you are already sworn, but we are going to seek to have you approved as an expert engineer, so can you please provide the board the benefit of your background and experience?
Sure, good evening again. William R. Vogt Jr. from L2A Land Design. I'm one of the owners and principals of the firm. I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineer from SUNY Buffalo, and I am a licensed professional engineer in both the state of New Jersey as well as New York. And I've been testifying for close to 25 years.
And your license is active in both places?
It is.
We'll certainly accept him as as an expert in his field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Vogt, you were hired by Outfront to work on this application?
I was.
And what did they ask you to do?
Sure, so we prepared the the survey and the site plans. That was submitted behalf of the applicant for the application. And what you have up on the screen are the set of site plans that were submitted as part of the application.
So I, these were submitted with the application, Mr. Dassie, do we need to mark them, or?
No.
I didn't think so, but just wanted to make sure. Mr. Cuss, if you could hand out the site plan. So, Mr. Vogt, just look at this, confirm for me that that this is the site plan.
Just give us the last revised date of it, Mr..
Sure, no problem. So it's a it's a set of three pages, and the last revision date, it's revision number two dated 4/4/2025.
And it was revised in response to Completeness comments, correct?
That's correct.
So this was submitted to the board, as I said in advance?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Okay, so, taking a look at the site plan, can you describe from an engineering perspective the lot that the billboard would be sitting on?
Sure. So, again, the property is located at 14. Oh, I I have one, let me see if it works. So, yeah, the 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 site is located at 1449 New Jersey State Highway Route 18. We're on the southbound side. So it's it's Block 19013, and that's Lot 6.11, and it's found on your tax map 19.13, and we're in the CC, Community Commercial Zone. Probably the best would be to go to, I I think it's Exhibit A1, is the aerial.
Sure, the aerial. So A1 is up on the screen. Why don't you describe the the surrounding site for the board?
Sure, so just to orient the board with the exhibit, northbound is to the right of the screen. The property is this triangular-shaped property located on the southbound side of Route 18. Slightly irregular-shaped lot. It's it's a it's a small lot, it's about 38,000 square feet. Sorry, it's 35, about 36,000 square feet, I apologize. There is an existing Dunkin' Donuts restaurant, convenience restaurant on the property with a drive-thru. The circulation to the site is off of Route 18. It's a it's a right in and a right and a left out, back onto Route 18 South. The vehicular circulation around the property, around the building for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Right in, right out.
It's right in.
Right in, left.
Yeah, right in, I'm sorry, did I say left out? It's right in, right out, yes. It's a circular vehicular circulation around the building, and that's in a counterclockwise orientation. And then our sign is going to go right on the, that would be the southbound or the southern corner of that triangle, on that right out, just adjacent to where Dunkin' Dunkin' has their pylon sign that exists there.
Great, so if you could turn to page two of your site plan.
Sure, we we're going to go back to C-02 of the site plan.
Yeah, just the second page of that document. Perfect, thank you, Maureen. Describe the the sign for the board, the size, et cetera.
Sure, so it's a, again, it's in the it's in the in the southeast corner of the property. It's a V-shaped sign, meaning that the the back of the sign, or the rear of the sign that's closest to the Dunkin' Donuts, is V-ed out. Okay, so we have a 15-foot spread on the backside of the sign, and on the front side of the sign, it's five feet. And that's to orient the sign with the roadway, that we're showing the customers the sign. It's to get better orientation with the roadway. That sign is a, what we typically call a 10-6-36, so it's 10 and 1/2 feet tall by 36 feet wide. And again, the, that's the nominal dimensions. The actual dimension on the width is 36.22 feet, which is 36 foot 3 inches, roughly. So that gives you an area of 380.31 square feet. What we're what we're doing, if you look at the, there's a, I don't know, Maureen, if you can zoom in, but on the bottom of that same site plan, we have an elevation. Yes, just to the right-hand side here. So, again, that that again shows you the the vertical and the horizontal dimension of that proposed sign. And it is a flag shape, so the the pole is is located, in this case, towards the front of the sign. Then the height of the sign is measured from the base or the foundation of of what it's supporting. So that's a monopole foundation. It's a four-foot diameter cylindrical steel pole that is augured into the ground. They typically auger the hole about a foot larger on both sides, so it's about a six-foot diameter hole that they auger, and then they set that monopole in. Then that gets all filled up with concrete. So the total height from that ground elevation is 37.5 feet. And I apologize, I I have it correct on the elevation, but I I made an error in the table above it, I had it at 35 feet, so I do apologize for that.
But of course, we will correct that for approval.
Absolutely. And I should mention that the roadway of Route 18 is roughly 2 to 2 and 1/2 feet tall higher than the ground elevation at the base of the pole. So when you're standing in Route 18, the sign is is closer to 35 feet in height. Not that that's really just a coincidence that the error kind of made that made sense.
Okay, so is, how is Outfront going to access the site when they do need to do that quarterly maintenance?
Sure, they would pull into the site just like a typical customer for Dunkin' Donuts does today, right off of the roadway.
Great, and are there any setback concerns? What are the setbacks?
The setbacks that we have are, we are, from the front property line off of Route 18, we are 10 feet setback from the front property line. And then from the side property line, we're at 5 feet.
And those meet the requirements of the code?
Yes, they do. The minimum requirements are 10, maximum 100-foot front yard setback.
The report we have indicates that there's a 25-foot side setback, no?
Sorry, can you repeat that, Mr. Dassie?
Sure. I'm looking at Mr. Watt's report from today, on page 3. The zoning requirements, minimum combined side yard setback, minimum side yard setback is 25 feet.
That that would be for the building itself. That's, so we we did the zoning analysis for both the the actual Dunkin' Donuts that's on the property and for the billboard. So that that's probably what's that that listing is, the 29.15 feet.
Are you aware of any provision in the ordinance, the CC zone, which details of second buildings in terms of setbacks or pertinences?
I'm I'm aware of the conditional use criteria. I'm aware of the conditional use criteria for this zone for a billboard sign, which is what we followed.
Thanks.
So, on that point about the requirements for billboard signs in this zone, does the proposal meet every requirement?
It does, except for one. There is a setback to residential, to residential zone. So, for, in your conditional use criteria, for a 1,000-square-foot area sign, you're required to be 500 feet from the nearest residential zone. So, our sign is smaller than 1,000 square foot. Just for round numbers, it's 380 square feet. So, roughly, it's 38% of the size of 1,000 square feet. And we are at approximately 230 feet from the nearest residential zone, which is directly across or to the east of us across the street on Route 18. So, if you, just stay with that math there, if you have a 1,000-square-foot sign that's permitted per your ordinance at 500 linear feet, if you use the same proportionality for a 380-square-foot sign, that 500 linear feet would go down to 190 linear feet. So, we would comply if you looked at it in that scenario. Does that analogy make sense to the board? Okay. Thank you.
So, but obviously, we are requesting the D3 variance. You're just making a point about scaling.
We are correct. That is correct.
Okay. Great. So, let's move on to the lighting. I know there was a question from the... There's going to be a question from the chairman about the lighting, but hopefully, we'll answer it before you have to ask.
Sure.
So, how does the lighting work?
Sure. So, if you go, Maureen, if you go to the third page of the site plan set, thank you, CO3, what we did is we prepared a lighting analysis at the ground level for the billboard. The way the billboard operates, it's an LED panel, okay? It's made up of a cluster of diodes. Those diodes are three... They're three different colors. There's a red, a green, and a blue. So, those clusters get repeated on the panel, and then the panels get repeated to fit inside of that 380-square-foot sign face. What those diodes do is they emit a light source on the board so you can read the message. The intent only for the sign is for you to read the message. It's not to cast light or illuminate anything on the ground. When I use that term illumination, that means that the light is being cast on a surface or it's really light trespass. So, like lighting in a parking lot, that is providing illumination or light trespass because you're lighting up the area of the ground below it so you can see. The billboard does the complete opposite. It's just creating illumination, which is brightness, just so the intended viewer can see the message on the sign. So, during the day, the sign operates at 100% output, okay? So, it's competing with the sun, you know, so it's full output. In the evening hours, or as you approach sundown, the panel is automatically programmed for what part of the country it's in, what time zone, whether it's daylight savings, you know, if it's, you know, if it's the middle of winter or if it's the dead of summer, that sign automatically starts to dim and dims to only 3% of its output in the evening hours. So, it's much like, the closest thing I can compare to is either the dashboard in your car or your smartphone when it goes into a night mode. Your eyes don't need a lot of light to see the message. It's actually counterintuitive. If there's too much light, you feel blinded. So, it automatically dims to 3% of its output. And what we're showing on this exhibit, or Page CO3, is an example of what the actual light level on the ground would be if the billboard was the only light source in the area. So, complete darkness, there's no other ambient light, the billboard is at 3% of its output, but every diode, so every bulb on that billboard, is illuminated, okay? So, we're being very conservative in our approach. So, what we did is we showed you at the ground level what those illumination levels would be along the property line and directly in front of the billboard. So, the most light comes directly at the center of the billboard, and then you can see on the ground level the different illumination levels in foot candles.
So, when you say every diode will be lit up, how would that be visible to somebody looking at the board? What would it look like?
So, it would be an all-white screen. So, basically, the entire screen is illuminated white, just to give you the... Just to give the worst-case scenario on the lighting analysis. That is never the case because that's not a message. So, you would only have a certain percentage of the sign illuminated to have that message presented.
So, at all times, it will never actually reach these numbers? Is that correct? Am I understanding that?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And again, any ambient light that's there from the roadway, from the current Dunkin' Donuts adjacent users, that will all wash out any of the lighting that would cast down from the sign. The intention is not for the lighting on the sign to illuminate anything on the ground.
It's just meant to be read?
That is correct.
Okay. You reviewed, I imagine, the report that we spoke about earlier from the professionals for the board?
I did.
Okay. If I could turn you to Page 6.
Sure.
If you look at Number 7, there's a note that words using the sign's message shall be of such size and brevity as to be readable to the average driver at a minimum distance of 550 feet, so its message can be read safely at highway speeds. Is Outfront intending to comply with this?
Yes, it is. And I think you can see that from the photo exhibit that we presented, which I think is...
A3.
A3. Thank you.
So, let's go back to A3. The... No, it's 1449 Route 18. That's that one. Thank you, Maureen. So, this is A3, the simulations. So, Mr. Vogt, you heard the question earlier from one of the board members to Mr. Antol about this?
Yes, I did.
So, why don't we just address that before we even go through them? You took these pictures, correct?
Yes, I did.
And what time of day did you take them?
Sure. It was a Tuesday, April 8th, and we got to the site around 9 o'clock. So, those photos are... We tried to get there after the morning rush hour. So, those photos are between roughly 9 and 10, maybe a little bit after 10 o'clock in the morning in both directions.
And how did you do it?
So, what I do is I pace off from that bucket truck that we set up. I pace off in both the northbound and the southbound directions, different increments of distances from the center of the billboard. So, I go out 250, 500 feet, 750, and 1,000 feet. And then, at each marker point, I go out into the middle of the road, obviously, when there's no traffic with a spotter, and then I take photographs from the lanes.
So, it was purposely done when there was no traffic so that you wouldn't get killed?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. So, can you describe from your, from an engineering perspective, what these simulations depict?
Sure. So, and I think it's, you know, you do have a signalized intersection that's just to the north of the subject location. That's Maple Street. So, when you see breaks in traffic, it's really the operation of that traffic signal there. So, you know, there are breaks in traffic. It's not a, you know, it's not a thoroughfare where there's no intersection. So, it is controlled. And again, that intersection at Maple is just about 1,000 linear feet.
Thank you. Okay. So, are there any other site plan concerns that you're aware of that you want to address for the board?
Not off the top of my head. Again, I think there was one, I think there was one bulk requirement that the planner and engineer requested in their review letter, and that was for the maximum landscape area ratio. What's permitted or required in the zone is .4. I did do a calculation before the hearing tonight. The existing is .44. And with that small six-foot diameter foundation that we're going to put in the ground, it really equates to 29 square feet of new impervious coverage, and it will, that landscape number will remain at .44.
So, there's no compliance issue here?
Yeah. It is compliant, both existing and proposed.
One other thing from the report, if you could turn to Page 6.
Sure.
Under Bulk Variants, there's Number 2 there. It refers to the minimum front yard setback of the building being existing and conforming. You see that?
Which one?
2A.
2A? Okay, yes.
Is there any issue that the sign will create that would impact this setback?
No. It will have no impact to the building and/or the existing pylon sign for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Thank you. Is the sign going to generate any traffic, in your opinion?
No, there's no traffic generated for the sign.
And does it take up a large portion of the lot?
No. Again, it's, the foundation is only six square feet, sorry, six foot in diameter at the base. So, again, 29 square foot.
And the sign itself, of course, is going to be well above any grade, so it's not affecting it that way.
That's correct. The sign is cantilevered above grade, and it is clearance for any delivery vehicles that may traverse the site for the Dunkin' Donuts and clearly, any passenger vehicles that enter and exit the site.
Are there any drainage, stormwater, or pollution issues?
No, there are not.
Okay. And do you have any other comments for the board?
I really don't.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vogt. I'm going to start with Mr. McCarthy.
Sure. So, sticking with the same exhibit that you guys have up, so it would be the last two pages, 6 and 7, showing the traveling from the northbound lane. To me, it looks like the sign is not going to be visible unless that adjacent property is developed to have those trees removed. I'm not sure if that was taken into consideration. What, I guess, just to give some testimony or clarification as to what the plan is for that.
Yeah. I'll address this. I just spoke to the applicant. If it's blocked, you know, of course, they won't show any advertisements. It would kind of be a waste. So, yes, we take that point. If the trees aren't cut, then we'd have to take that into consideration.
We're just curious in anything. That was, that's the only comment that I have.
And if somebody moved in?
If someone moved in, oh, to that site?
Yeah. The adjacent lots.
If that's a person, you mean?
Then you would, no. If there was anything, any structure that went in.
Oh, if they, yeah, if they cut down the trees, then...
If they cut the trees down, you'd illuminate.
Exactly. Sorry, I got confused. I thought you were talking about somebody moving in with their house there. I was going to say, I don't think...
No, not literally, no.
Yeah, okay.
When we did have the TRC meeting, we were, we were made aware of an application for the adjacent lot for a small shopping center, and that would, that would clear the site of almost every tree. So, that's why we presented the photograph simulation of the trees being cleared.
Okay. Mr. Watz?
Just to continue on to that, yes, there is an approved application at this point. In fact, the amended site plan was approved just last, at the last planning board meeting for Oak 18, which is a tiny strip mall. And I'll hold on to some of my comments with their sign after the planner speaks because that site definitely is going through compliance. They had final sign plans, but there were few comments from DOT, as well as the tenancy is now confirmed. So, they wanted some alterations to the site. They came back to the planning board, is now approved, and they should start construction I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And I know you said that the size of the sign is much less than 1,000 square feet, and proportionally to that, your setback with the residential is lower. But I just want the board to understand, there is no correlation between the two. Those are two separate conditions of the conditional use. So, to, just because the sign is smaller doesn't mean that the setback should be reduced. I just want the board to understand, those are two separate conditions. One of the condition of the conditional use is that it allows a 1,000-square-feet sign, a maximum sign area. And then, the next, one of the other conditions is that a billboard must be, must not be within 500 linear feet of a residential zone. So, I just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you. And to that point, we're, of course, not asking the board to amend the code. It's just a, you know, scaling point we're making, but you're absolutely right. Those are separate requirements.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. I didn't think scaling had anything to do with it anyway. It is or it isn't.
Exactly. That's why we're getting the D3 variance.
I'm going to start on my left. Mr. Sang, any questions?
Mr. Scott?
Thank you. Consideration for the northbound side residents? Have you, any consideration about the lighting affecting their homes?
Yes. And again, that's why we did show the exhibit.
Yeah, I mean, sitting in your living room, seeing this flashing and then changing, we're changing every, what, 30, what?
It's 30 seconds.
30 seconds to another thing. I mean, has any consideration been thought about that?
Yes. And you're going to hear some additional testimony from our planner, but Route 18 along that corridor, especially up to the residence on that side, is heavily buffered by existing tree line.
I travel that road. I can see right through there.
There are, so we did go back into the parallel street, that's Marlboro Road, and we did look at some areas there. And there are some areas where you can see through between the homes and see that Dunkin' Donuts, but they are very few and far between.
Well, maybe somebody here from the public might be here to talk about it. We'll see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure.
Use the scenario, if you was driving at night going southbound, and if I was the only car in the row, and there was no other lights, what's the distance at some point that I would actually see that billboard? And how bright would it be?
Sure. So, you would, you would, as far as you can see, you would be able to see that there's a light source at this location. So, if you had a clear vision of it, you could, you could see it for well over 1,000 linear feet from where I took the pictures, if it was the only light source. You wouldn't be able to read it, but you would be able to see that there's something with a light source in the distance.
And the brightness of that light would be, would that change as a car's coming southbound in that direction? The lightness would still be the same as I get closer?
So, as you get closer, no, the light will stay the same because it's not intended to shine light on you or the street or the ground below it. It's just to create a, produce a light source for the actual sign. So, there's no, there's no real, like the lights in this room, it's not like it's going to get brighter as you get, as you get closer to it for your eye. It's really going to be the same no matter where you are. It's just, in that lighting scenario, we like to show the worst-case scenario of what the actual light levels, which are very minimal, would be at the ground close to the billboard. And those are, those are measured in 20-foot increments.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, sir. Ladies, am I right? None.
Chairman, can I just say?
Oh, go ahead, Counselor.
This is going to be 30 seconds.
That's correct.
So, that addresses Number 13 on Page 6 of the report, right?
Yes.
Now, is it going to be a single-faced or double-faced billboard?
It will be constructed as a double face, so a sign on both directions, the northbound and the southbound. Now, the northbound direction, if it's blocked, as you heard before, if it's blocked by trees that have not been cleared yet, obviously, we wouldn't present it or turn it on. But it will be constructed.
The report from our planner, again, on Page 6, under 3B, said at a pre-app meeting in February...
But it will be constructed.
The report from our planner, again on page six, under 3B, said at a pre-app meeting in February 24, you indicated that the proposed sign would be single-faced, single-faced. However, the proposed sign appears to be double-faced, so it is available for double face.
That's correct, and, and that was when we were brought, it was brought to our attention that there was an adjacent application on the undeveloped portion of the property to our south. So we, we changed, we, we used the information that we got from our TRC meeting, and then amended what we presented to you folks on the application.
Mr. Vogt, can you tell me where the closest billboard sign is to this?
Sure, so the closest one, I researched this with, with the, the folks from out front. The closest sign is on the northbound side of Route 18, south of us, and it's approximately 2, 2,600 linear feet. And, sorry, that, that's a permit location, so it's, it's not constructed.
Where is that, where are you referring to, sir?
That would be at a-
South of this?
Yeah, that's at a bus stop, here, I have the actual, okay, so it's permit 67337, okay, that's on the northbound side, it's a bus shelter, uh, uh, sign, that's by signal outdoor, and that's approximately 2,600 linear feet away to the south of us, right, and then out front has an unconstructed permit, so the billboard is not constructed, but they do have a permit. Also, in the northbound direction, it's permit 77337, and that is approximately 4,850 linear feet, and that again is to the south of us.
The permit, it's not been put up yet?
It's not been constructed.
Do you know of any other signs coming south, entering the township of Old Bridge on Route 18, either north or south, all the way to Route 9?
Uh, the closest one that I'm aware of, I'm, I'm just looking through the notes here, there's one in East Brunswick, it's 6.5 miles away.
No, I'm familiar, I'm just asking, let's just deal with Old Bridge.
Sure.
I think the, the East Brunswick one might be in South River.
Okay.
But nonetheless, it's set, it's set at an intersection of OBT and 18.
Okay.
So I believe that's in South River. Coming into the township of Old Bridge, do you know of any going south?
I, I don't.
As a matter of fact, would you be surprised if I said there's none going south on 18 beyond the entrance to the Parkway down at 105?
I, I wouldn't be surprised.
Would you be surprised if I told you there's none coming north either?
Again, I wouldn't.
Would you describe the area there while it's a commercial zone, while it's CC zone, it's kind of shared with residential, actually, 230 feet away, right across the roadway?
Sure.
And that's not just one house, there's a, there's a lot of homes.
Yes.
And to your south, you have two apartment complexes.
Sure, do you want us to put up the arrow for you, A1?
I know the area, I'm familiar with the area.
Sure.
I'm just saying. So there's a lot of residential around. As a matter of fact, just to your north, there's R80 Zone, which is residential, on the southbound side, and then R40, when you cross over, I believe, Oak Street. It's all residential. So I'm saying, do you normally erect signs in residential areas?
I, I don't think Mr. Vogt, he's not out front, I don't think he can answer that question, Chairman, that's more of a question for out front itself.
Well, he's under oath, have Mr. Atol answer that question for me. Atol.
Yes, we have constructed signs in close proximity to residential uses.
You have?
Yes.
Could you tell me where they are in Old Bridge?
Not in Old Bridge, no.
Okay. You've answered my question, thanks. Anything else from this witness?
No, thank you.
I'm gonna tell you that, I ain't cutting the time, there was, we, we started at 20 of, so there's 140 minutes split, so you have 10 left.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get through our final witness in 10.
That's what I was gonna ask you, if you wanted to wait on that, or?
Yeah, it doesn't seem smart for anybody to start, and then you guys would have to remember what he said.
Well, I agree, but it's yours to prosecute, so I'm asking you.
No, I, I agree with the point you're attempting to make, yes, we should come back, yeah.
All right, I have to go to a public portion anyway, while you're here.
Sure.
So that would probably fit in just perfectly, I think. This is matter 49-2024Z, this is for a billboard, the location is 1449 Highway 18 in Old Bridge. Anyone here in the courtroom this evening wish to be heard, please raise your hand or stand. There will be further public portion on this matter, but for tonight, this is the only public portion for this matter. I see none, I'm gonna close the public portion.
Thank you.
Anything, Counselor, other than a date?
No, we'll just get a new date, thank you, Chairman.
Sure, we'll work on that right now, if that's possible. We have a date, possibly, if that works for-
July 17th is our next open meeting.
July 17th.
July 17th.
Counselor, what do you think?
They're just checking, if you could give me 30 seconds.
No problem. Mr. Dusty, does that work for you?
Sure, absolutely.
Are you sure? You wanna say okay? George, you're the guy. Okay, we're good.
You gonna take that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your witnesses tonight and the testimony, I'm gonna make an announcement on this for those of watching at home. This matter will be continued to July 17th, there'll be no further notice. As always, you can always check on the website of the township under the zoning board of adjustment, and you can see the schedules posted. We thank you again, we'll see you on July 17th.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Good night.
Uh, we're gonna go five-minute recess real quick, just so we can, the stagers can set up, and the next application can come up. Five minutes, please.
We've returned from recess, this is the zoning board of adjustment on May 1. May I have a roll call, please, if I second that?
Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner? Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Dusty?
Here. Oh.
Here.
Excuse me.
All right, we've reached the final application for the evening, it's 54-2024Z, Phoenix Realty Developers. This is, the zone is SD1 Special Development, this is block 1051, lot 29.14. Physical location is 12 Industrial Drive, Keyport, mailing address. Major and preliminary final site plan with C and D variance, Bus Depot. Applicant proposes to add bus transportation company as a tenant to the existing contractor yard. Donna Jennings Esquire, representing the applicant, yeah?
Thank you, good evening, for the record, I'm Donna Jennings, from the law firm of Lenz, Goldman &amp; Spitzer, as the board chairperson correctly indicated. The applicant is here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval with use and bulk variances for property located at 12 Industrial Drive, identified as block 1051, lot 29.14 on the township's tax maps. The applicant is proposing to add a bus transportation use as a tenant to the existing office warehouse space, utilizing approximately 3,700 square feet of the existing building space, providing 45 spaces in the rear of the property for the buses to park. In addition, the applicant is seeking to construct other minor improvements related to installing a 10-space parking area in the front yard, 15 parking spaces along the westly and northerly portion of the building, as well as two dedicated loading spaces. Finally, the applicant is seeking to lift condition number 13 from a prior resolution, which was memorialized on November 6, 2014. That condition states, quote, "The applicant agreed that the only existing outdoor storage which shall be permitted on site is for the existing granite contractor, sand and gravel for the applicant, truck and machinery for the applicant, and nine outdoor storage trailers for the applicant's storage material, inventory, and supplies in concrete block bins. The applicant shall provide a revised site plan indicating the exact location of these facilities, and the number of trailers for outdoor storage shall be limited to nine," end of quote. The applicant requests to lift the condition so that it may park buses in the rear of the property. We kind of debate whether or not we're storing, obviously, if you'll permit a bus transportation facility, there's gonna be buses on site, we're parking the buses, I wouldn't really say we're storing, but we were called out for a variance for that, so we're here seeking to lift that condition to clarify what that condition meant going forward. So, the applicant is seeking the D1 variance because the property is also split-zoned. The front portion of the property is located in the SD1 zone, where the bus transportation is a permitted use. However, the buses are proposed to be parked in the rear of the property, which is the ER zone, and bus transportation is not a permitted use there. The applicant's also seeking a bulk variance for minimum landscaped area ratio, where .40 is required and .15 is proposed, and finally, the applicant is seeking relief with respect to parking in the front yard and providing a gravel lot in the rear property. As will be more thoroughly discussed by the applicant's planner, the record will show the applicant satisfies both the positive and the negative criteria to warrant the requested variance as requested. First, it has been recognized in Scholastic Bus Company versus Zoning Board of Fair Lawn at 326 NJ Super 49, that school transportation is an inherently beneficial use because it fulfills a public obligation to transport schoolchildren. Thus, the applicant satisfies the positive criteria as a matter of law. The record will further show the applicant satisfies the negative criteria under the four-part seek-a-balancing test because of public interest greatly outweighs any detrimental effects. The record will also show that the applicant satisfies the criteria to be entitled to the requested bulk variance pursuant to price v. Hameji, the bulk variances are assumed in the grant of a use variance. However, the record will alternatively and independently reflect that the applicant satisfies the positive criteria by evading multiple purposes of municipal land use law, including A, promoting the general welfare, G, providing for sufficient space in appropriate locations, and M, to encourage coordination of various public-private procedures and activities, shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of development and to the more efficient use of land. Finally, the applicant satisfies the traditional two-pronged negative criteria for the bulk variance. And in support of the application, we are gonna call two direct witnesses, the site engineer sitting to my right, Walt Hopkins, and the applicant's planner, Andrew Janu. We do have the applicant in the audience in case a question comes up, and we're unable to answer those questions, we wanted to make sure we had the right person here for that. And just as a matter of record-keeping, we are in receipt of two reports. We received a report from fire district number two, dated April 29, 2025, and then the board engineer, planner, and traffic review letter dated May 1, 2025. So with that, I'd like to have Mr. Hopkins sworn in, and we can begin.
Why don't we swear in both witnesses that you anticipate, and they can identify themselves as they get ready. Gentlemen, please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
We'll ask you to identify yourselves and spell your last name as you come up, all right?
Walter Hopkins, H.O.P.K.I.N.
Now, with Ms. Jennings' wonderful introduction, are you just gonna say yes, what she said, or what?
Almost.
If you could first, Mr. Hopkins, just give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications.
Sure, I have a bachelor's science from Jackson University, I'm a licensed New Jersey in the states of New Year's, excuse me, New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. My licenses are current. I'm a certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have had the pleasure of testifying before this board and your planning board surrounding municipalities, Old Bridge, keep, excuse me, Marlboro, Keyport.
Mr. Hopkins is known, Mr. Hopkins is known to me, and I'm sure to members of the board, we certainly accept him as an expert witness.
Great, thank you. If you could, Mr. Hopkins, if you could just describe the- So Unit 1 in the front, um, it can be seen, that's 5,684 square feet. Units 2 and 3 have been combined in the middle of the, of the, um, of the building, which is 3,105 square feet. There's a small Unit 6, 780 square feet, uh, and Unit 5 is 308, 3,871 square feet. Unit 4 is what we're here before you this evening for, roughly 300, 3,713 square feet, uh, and it's accessed along the, um, towards the bottom of the, of the page where there are overhead doors. The majority of the site will remain and be better organized. If you've seen an aerial, have been to the site, it's a little bit scattered right now. Um, there's really no striped or organized parking spaces, and we plan to come before you to, to seek, um, permission to better organize the site. Uh, there'll also be a, um, a parking lot in the front, which will have the porous pavement. So in the front, we're proposing 10 new parking spaces on this porous pavement. We're delineating and striping five, um, spaces along the, um, the western portion of the property, and then another 10, um, between the building and, and the, the rear parking in, in the back. Your ordinance requires 22 spaces be provided for passenger vehicles. We're proposing 25, so that's the 10 in the front, the 10 in the rear, and the 5 on the side. Uh, we're also proposing 45 spaces for buses. These are smaller buses, um, what the applicant's tenant would use. These are 20-foot-long and 38-foot-long, um, school buses.
You indicated they're school buses, so they're to transport children?
That's correct.
In this area, schools in Middlesex County.
Yes.
How many, uh, how many spots in the back?
Forty-five. Thirty-six of those are, are 20 feet long, and nine of them are 38 feet long. And, and to better organize this, uh, site and demonstrate where the buses go, uh, you can't really stripe gravel, so we're using, um, wheel blocks, those little concrete things that you back up, so that, you know, provides one space for every, um, for every bus. There are two loading areas. We identify them as loading areas on, on the, on the plan, but they're really just striped out to allow access. If you've been to the site, there's, there's overhead doors, it's kind of operates like a garage, so we've just striped out, um, basically the entire rear of the, of the building to allow for access in and out, and then along the, um, a portion of the western side, which will allow for the, the buses to access that portion of the building. There's some relief that we're going to request this evening. Uh, as Ms. Jennings indicated, your, your ordinance requires .4 landscape ratio. We have .21 now, and, and adding that porous pavement in the front will reduce that to .15. You'll hear testimony from the planner, but I, you know, I have been to the site. I think this is my third or fourth, um, visit to you, uh, on, on different site plans, so this area and the property next door, and it is certainly consistent with, with the area. There's also an existing side yard setback, uh, that, um, violation or, or exception from your ordinance. Your ordinance requires 25. The existing building is at 24. Uh, we're not changing that. We, we quite frankly can't. Um, and there's a few design waivers that we didn't see in, in the review letter, but we want to make sure that we bring them to your attention and, and request relief. We believe that your ordinance does require that, um, the, the parking surfaces be paved. Um, the, the surfaces in the rear are, are gravel, so we just ask that they remain as gravel and, and not be paved. Uh, and then parking in the front yard. It, it, I think that's subjective interpretation, but we certainly would rather be conservative and ask you for relief to allow to park in the front yard, um, as we're proposing. And again, that's, that's consistent with, uh, many of the, the properties in the area. Actually, you can see a few of them on the aerial. Very simple as far as grading and drainage. There's a, the parking area in the front, it's porous pavement, which allows the water to go through the pavement. Um, we met with your professionals before we even started the design, and what we've proposed isn't, uh, it's kind of like an overflow, that if the, the porous pavement does fill up in a big storm, that it would just overflow into the street. Um, the, the, um, the amount of improvements that we're proposing does not meet the requirements or the definition of a, a major development. However, we are reducing the rates of runoff for all of the storms up to and including the 100-year storm. As far as landscaping, again, uh, an improvement to the site, there, there really isn't much to speak of today. Uh, we're proposing, uh, two street trees along Industrial Drive, some small shrubs there as well, as well as foundation plantings, island plantings, with a mixture of shrubs and ornamental trees. As far as lighting, lighting exists on the site, there's two wall packs right on the front of the building, and they adequately light the, um, the, the proposed parking area, and we've demonstrated that on our plans as well. We do actually, in fact, have approval from Real Soil Conservation District. Um, there are some other outside agencies that we haven't applied for, but we certainly would as a condition of approval, including, uh, Middlesex County. Um, we can go through the letters at this point. I can take questions, however, the, the board and chairman would like to proceed.
If you're done with your testimony, I'm going to ask the professionals what they have.
Sure.
Mr. McCarthy.
Um, so did you want to, how did you want to do it? Did you want to go through the letter comment by comment, or? I know there's quite a few things in here where we're asking for testimony, so I don't know.
I would prefer not to go letter by letter. Um, I could tell you that we can comply. There's a few things that I would like to discuss with the board, um, and it, and it has to do with improvements. So there's, there's, um, several items on Page 7 that the, the consultant has requested. Um, we, we'd like to comply with some of them and, and, and ask for, for consideration not to do it on, on others. Um, there's a suggestion on, on Item 24 to, to provide, um, additional, uh, or to provide curbing along the perimeter of the parking lot. We really weren't sure what the benefit of that was, and since it's internal to the site, we would ask that perhaps that that not be required. Um, along the front edge of Industrial Drive, because that is a public improvement, we kind of thought that we, it would be in our best interest to comply with that. Um, however, there, there are sidewalks suggested along the front. Um, we, we didn't see any benefit to that. It, this isn't certainly one of the streets that you would encourage pedestrian, um, walking, and there wouldn't be anything to connect it to. Concrete aprons, uh, that too, I think that's a good suggestion, uh, at the entrances, and we, we would, we would want to do that. Um, the other was the, um, suggestion that concrete pads be used for the loading areas. And again, just because they're really not loading areas, like a traditional warehouse, where there's going to be a trailer sitting there, it's really just an area to keep open so that the buses can drive in, we would ask that they just, uh, be allowed to remain as they are.
So if it's, if it's not going to be a loading area, should it, should it be striped that way then? I think that would only be the only concern, because, um, if in the future it's used as a loading area, there would be a concern about if it is asphalt typically over time. The asphalt does degrade within those loading, unless you're doing some type of heavy-duty pavement, cross-section or something of that nature.
I agree, and, and I, you know, maybe we should work this out. I, I, we can, we can do it if you really feel that it is, or if there's a striping, a way to stripe it or sign it. Um, I, I don't think there's any plans to actually have trailers load there. Um, so if you, your office or the consultant's office are, are happy with us striping and signing it, we can do that. If ultimately it's decided that we, that we have to use concrete, then we will.
Okay.
I think the, um, only other item that I want to discuss, and I'm, I'm trying to find out where it was, but it was regarding guide rail. There is an existing guide rail. Uh, it is Item 40 on Page 9. Um, it, it's just a, it, I don't know if it's a suggestion, it just says that we may want to replace to current standards. Again, we would just ask, it's, it's been there. I don't know that there's anything significantly wrong with it. It may not come up to today's standards, but it doesn't make it unsafe. Um, I, maybe I would suggest that we meet out with your office or, or the consultants just to see the condition of it, if we can agree that it's in, in good working order that we allow it to remain.
Okay. Uh, I think that would be fine as a condition. We would, we would want to obviously look at it, and then if it is deemed necessary to be replaced, then it'll be replaced.
And that, that's all I had as far as things we can't comply with. If there's anything you need additional testimony on, or, or you'd like me to actually testify that we'll comply to it, I'm, I'm happy to.
Sure. I think one of the other things that, that you did testify to about the lighting in the front of the property, and I apologize that it wasn't included in here, I didn't think about it until, um, driving up here today. There's no, I don't believe there's any lighting either existing or proposed in the rear of the building. Is that correct?
I don't. Want the building mounted?
Yeah, I think there's some building mounted.
Okay. Um, I guess.
Add to the plan.
If the, if the purpose is to use this as a, some form of bus depot, typically, at least, my understanding is that the drivers would arrive to the site relatively early, and it can be in the hours where there is no sunlight yet. Um, so just from a safety standpoint, maybe we need to look at providing some lighting in the rear of the property to take care of that.
That's fine. We'll, we'll analyze what's there. Uh, if it needs to be supplemented, then, then we'll work with you.
Okay.
I don't believe so, no. Yeah. There is one before. Yeah.
So I do know that there was some comments regarding traffic on the site. I don't know if, if you wanted to provide testimony for that, or how we wanted to kind of address those. We could start at number 45.
Well, I, I did notice that also, and I, I think there were some, some, some comments and suggestions that we can comply with. I, I, being on my side of the fence here, I, I focused on the fact that they, that they did concur that it was, uh, insignificant increase, so I would just like to put that on the record, and, and any touch up to the report, um, we'd be happy to do.
Okay. Um, Item number 47, I think that's probably same thing, and we're talking about parking. Um, I think we will have to just double-check now that we have the actual square footages of each individual, um, unit as far as the architectural, to make sure that there's no.
Do you think they're also on the cover sheet of the site plan?
Okay.
They should make sure it was sufficient.
They should be consistent. If they're not, we can, we can.
Okay. Uh, we were looking for some testimony regarding the existing, um, stormwater system on-site and what the conditions were of that, if, if you may know what they are.
Well, we, we didn't, uh, we didn't TV it. We did survey it, and it is, um, mostly built in compliance with the original, uh, plan.
Okay. Um, we would make it a condition then, when we go out and look at the guide rail, if it does appear that that existing system looks like it is in disrepair, that any necessary improvements would be made to it.
That's fine.
Okay. Is everything?
Um, so, number 18 on the report, is there any maintenance work or repair work that will occur on-site for the buses?
Maintenance and repair. Minor repairs are done as needed, oil filter changes, safety and tire checks, all inside of the building.
Okay. So no work outside, right?
Correct. And there's a certified, um, contractor that takes away any, um, waste disposal associated with that.
Should it be in Unit 4? Where's it going to be?
Yes, 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 Unit 4 only.
The only question I have, and, um, I mean, I wasn't able to come up with a number, but if you look at one of the arials that was posted in the review memo, right? Right now, there appears to be almost 28 buses that are parked on the site in the near-map imagery. So I was trying to see, because I think we would be more comfortable with having a fixed number of bus parking on the site, because I don't want it to be like a freefall, especially because it's not a paved parking lot, and there is no delineation, right? You have the wheel stops, but more than often, we notice that once it's approved, uh, it's, this, the buses or the vehicles are just crammed up in, at the back. So I would be more comfortable if there is a limit on how many buses can be parked. In the arials, I'd see 28. Your, uh, testimony shows like almost 48 stalls, but then again, uh, there are only nine bus parking, uh, the larger bus stalls. In the aerial, I noticed that all of them are the large buses. It's not like those mini vans that are being parked. So when I see nine delineated spaces on-site, I see 28. It's a bit confusing. I know based on the passenger car parking, you don't need as many. You, the requirement is for 22. You have more than adequate parking. So, I, I mean, I don't have the CAD drawings to come up with a number, but maybe, uh, you should come up with a number that you're comfortable, and the board is comfortable, should the board act favorably, so that, uh, there is no haphazard parking at the back.
Yeah, no, that, that totally makes sense, unless this has to point what the number is. He said 40. So we're parked for 45 right now.
But the 45 include only nine bus parking spaces. The others are passengers. So the size of the stalls differ. You may not be able to put in 40 buses at that location unless it's haphazard, and that's what we are trying to avoid.
Right. Hold on one sec.
And I'm really sorry to put you on the spot to calculate those, but I think it makes sense.
No, no, I don't disagree with you. We're, let us come up with the right number. Yeah. So we, they said, what about 35?
I think it's going to be hard for us to sit here and just discuss numbers without actually being able to see it on a plan, and just, I, I think I may have written the number down incorrectly. What did you say the length of, for the smaller bus?
The shorter are 20.
They're 20?
Yeah, the larger, aren't, aren't quite the full size, but they're 38.
There's 36, 36 spaces, 20 feet, and nine spaces for 38 feet.
Right. I would be more comfortable to see something on paper, and I'm sure the board would want to see something too before we, uh, you know, come up with a number, and before they take a vote.
but if you look at one of the aerials that was posted in the review memo, right? Right now, there appears to be almost twenty-eight buses that are parked on the site in the near map imagery. So, I was trying to see, because I think we would be more comfortable with having a fixed number of bus parking on the site, because I don't want it to be like a freefall, especially because it's not a paved parking lot, and there is no delineation, right? You have the wheel stops, but more than often, we notice that once it's approved, it's, the buses or the vehicles are just crammed up in, at the back. So, I would be more comfortable if there is a limit on how many buses can be parked. In the aerials, I'd see twenty-eight. Your testimony shows like almost forty-eight stalls, but then again, there are only nine bus parking stalls, the larger bus stalls. In the aerial, I noticed that all of them are the large buses. It's not like those mini vans that are being parked. So, when I see nine delineated spaces on-site, I see twenty-eight. It's a bit confusing. I know based on the passenger car parking, you don't need as many. The requirement is for twenty-two. You have more than adequate parking. So, I, I mean, I don't have the CAD drawings to come up with a number, but maybe you should come up with a number that you're comfortable, and the board is comfortable, should the board act favorably, so that there is no haphazard parking at the back.
Yeah, no, that, that totally makes sense, unless, unless, as to what the number He said forty. So, we're parked for forty-five right now.
But the forty-five include only nine bus parking spaces. The others are passengers. So, the size of the stalls differ. You may not be able to put in forty buses at that location unless it's haphazard, and that's what we are trying to avoid.
Right. Hold on one sec.
And I'm really sorry to put you on the spot to calculate those, but I think it makes sense.
No, no, I don't disagree with you. Let us come up with the right number. Yeah, so we, they said, what about thirty-five?
I think it's going to be hard for us to sit here and just discuss numbers without actually being able to see it on a plan. And just, I, I think I may have written the number down incorrectly. What did you say the length of, for the smaller bus?
The shorter are twenty.
They're twenty?
Yeah, the larger, aren't, aren't quite the full size, but they're thirty-eight.
Thirty-six, thirty-six spaces, twenty feet, and nine spaces for thirty-eight feet.
Right. I would be more comfortable to see something on paper, and I'm sure the board would want to see something too, before we, you know, come up with a number, and before they take a vote.
that it, it looks very nice here.
Always does.
It always does, I know. And looks very bad when you look at the, the near picture, but... Mr. Hopkin, could you just tell me exactly how many spots are in this particular area of the drawing? That's supposed to be the buses, right? And if you looked at this drawing, they kind of outline the whole perimeter. But in this drawing, it looks to me like they're going to be in the center and on the sides. Is that correct?
That is, yes.
And if, if that works, how many, how many spots are there?
So, there are forty-five.
There was forty-five there.
Yes.
Thirty-six, twenty-foot, and nine, thirty-eight.
And nine, nine at thirty-eight, right? I'm assuming the nine have to be on one of the, one of the sides, probably this side?
Yeah, the nine, these are the, the nine.
Okay. Regardless of the number you work out, whether it's forty-five, thirty-five, thirty, in any, in, under any condition, the spots you want to add in the front, are they ever going to be used by buses?
No.
It cannot be.
It's car parking.
Okay. You agree to that?
Agreed, yeah, sure.
And they, these spots, the spots that are in the center that you're adding?
Yes, and those are for cars, and they have to be for cars to comply with your ordinance.
Well, I understand that. What happens to the thirty-five or forty drivers? Where do they park?
They park in their...
In their bus spot.
Their bus spot.
So... See, that never happens. That sounds good, but that never happens, because nobody gets in their bus, pulls it out, gets out of their car, pulls their car in a spot. It's just, it just, it doesn't happen.
Well, I, I can't say that I'm a bus operator or seen it, but I would suggest that not ever, all the bus drivers come in at the same time. So, they'll, they'll park in a, in a spot that's...
All right. I, experience tells me that, that, that really doesn't work that way, but I mean, it sounds good. And I don't think that you're ready to commit to a number with the township, I guess, until they can have, you can have a little bit more review on this. You're not going to testify. I, I don't know, the, the board may have some questions for you, Mr. Hopkin, but you're not going to put any further testimony on, right? But you have a planner you want to put on tonight, right? You're putting a planner on?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'll put, I'll put a planner on, sure.
I think just before we do that, I did have two quick follow-up questions, just to make sure that...
Go ahead. I just want to know what direction we're going in.
Yep, sure.
This is more so just for bookkeeping, to make sure that I can cross it off my list so that way later it's not a problem. Would it be your testimony for the porous pavement, that it would be a sufficient thickness for whatever vehicle traffic is expected to be on it?
Yes, we'll make sure of that.
Perfect. And then one other question. So, looking at the architectural, I believe this was marked as A2.
Yes.
Are, are there overhead doors on unit two? I guess it's two-dash-three. Are those overhead doors that are on the side similar to where unit four would have overhead doors?
Yes.
So, there would be a concern then with the, the parking that is proposed on that side, if it, if it is going to impact those overhead doors?
So, I, it seems like we're going to come back, right? But I will clarify that with, with your office. We, I think we did attempt to show that, and that's where there aren't parking spaces.
Sure.
But we'll, we'll coordinate that between and, and make sure that it's shown better on the plan.
Okay. And just a note too, I think it was in our letter, but just to bring it up, we would probably look to have the ADA stalls relocated to the front, just if, if the grading allows it, just because it's...
It's a problem.
The, the point is that it has to be the closest physically possible for the entrance, so that's just one of the things. I don't know, I saw that there was, it looked like a bit of grade change from the, from the grading plan, so I don't know if it's feasible, but just something just to take into consideration.
Certainly will. You, you're, you're right on about the grading, so it has to be the closest that works, right? So, but thank you.
Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
First, I apologize. I jumped in last minute to this application. I was not supposed to cover it, and then I started having all these questions. Usually, I, if I have questions like that, I would have asked upfront. I would recommend that you set up a meeting with us prior to coming back, so that we could resolve any such issues, and we're more prepared when we come in front of the board. The township will be more than happy to have a technical review meeting, and, I mean, although I was talking to the board attorney, and I was saying maybe the planner can go in first, but if, if this needs to work out, then it would make sense for Andrew to come back too, so that he can sum up everything well, in terms of positive, negative criterias. It's a use variance, and I have heard him before. I have full faith in him. So, once we work out the technical part of it, he can come back and then present his testimony, if that's okay with the board.
Right.
It's a suggestion.
So, the testimony wouldn't be tonight for the planner. We'll bring the planner back when, when we all come back.
Unless Donna thinks something else.
No, that, that's fair. We can do that.
During that time, will all of the matters be decided in, between the, between Mr. Hopkin and, and, and the engineer for the township?
Mm-hmm.
It'll all be agreed upon or not agreed upon, but it'll be settled?
Yes.
Please send me an email, and I'll set up a, a virtual meeting with the consultants as well as myself, and let's sort this out.
Yeah, I, I do want to let the board ask any questions, should they have any one. Mr. Hopkin is here, and it's fresh in your mind. I'm going to start on this end with Mr. Singh. Anything for the, for the engineer?
Oh, yes, sir.
Just got a note?
No.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hopkins, this has always been operated as a bus depot. From my, I, I go back, I could see this eleven months ago, you had buses back there. I mean, why, why come now? To legitimize it?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not the operator, but I, I do, it hasn't been forever, I can tell you that.
Something had to, some alarm had to go off and say, you better get over there and get approval. Is that what's happened?
Well, I don't know. That's a fair question for the engineer.
Oh, Ms. Jennings, is that...
Well, she's, she's not a witness.
No, she's the attorney.
Trying to get advice for her then. Clearly, the picture we can see is December twenty-four. There's no doubt that the operation has been going on in some time, and you're here to clarify, clarify that, try and straighten it out. That I understand. As far as how much time, I don't know that it's really that relevant. We, if, we're going to try and clear this up. If you have any questions technically, Mr. Hopkin, though, I'm sure he could answer those.
And I will be back.
And I, we know.
I'll wait for you to come back.
Arnold said that.
Mr. Stoner?
No, I'm just going to ask the same question. He just beat me to the punch, yeah.
Okay. I honestly don't know the answer to that. I have been involved with this since two thousand and seven. I know it hasn't been for that long.
We've, we've agreed that, we know it is, and we're, we're going to try and solve this, right? Okay, so we'll move on from that. Mr. Izzo?
Okay.
Ms. Andrews? Ms. Testaverde? And, and I don't have anything, because I know we're going to come back and settle this, this matter, and I appreciate your testimony this evening. I, I would, I would be concerned, if you want my personal view, that we can get these buses situated in such a way that it's a safe issue, that they, they'll be coordinated. There are other operations going on here. I know that they're leaving probably very early in the morning, and particularly in the darkness. Lighting issue, I think, is critical as well. The, I'm, I'm assuming there's only one in and out here, the way this is drawn. Is it an in-and-out drive? I, I don't think the other one is used, or it looks, I don't know why it would be used, but...
They are, they are both used, one shared with the adjacent property.
Okay. It may, it may be good to discharge them all on that one side, but it's just my opinion. So, if we can get that, I think, settled by a meeting and, and re-meeting here, I think that would benefit both the township and certainly the applicant, and we can settle these matters.
Now, to address the letter from the fire department, which says that we felt the plan was conceptually unsatisfactory. You have this letter, three...
Yep. And, and Ms. Jennings, I know you mentioned that at the beginning, and I'm, I'm sure you'll take that into account.
Absolutely.
Absent any other comments, I'm going to go to a public portion.
I just want to offer one thing. Even the fire marshal is available to meet, should you try to schedule a meeting with him. Maureen can help you set up that meeting.
Good, and we reached out to him to try to, because I know how that goes in this town. So, I tried to resolve that before we got here, but just wasn't able to catch up with him.
That's okay. We used to have the fire marshal.
Yeah, I remember.
Yes.
Because you would point to him and say, are you okay?
Yes, so, yeah.
I always made sure he said yes.
You remember?
Yes, I do.
All right. The township, any other questions from the professionals? And absent any other comments from here, I'm going to go to a public portion. Okay? This is matter A fifty-four, it is twenty-twenty-four Z. This is twelve Industrial Drive for a proposal for, at a bus transportation company as a tenant. Anyone here in this room who should be hurried, please raise their hand or stand. There will be further comments and testimony on this matter, but this is the only time tonight that you can have a public portion. There'll be one at each and every meeting. I see none, I'll close the public portion. Final comments, Ms. Jennings, or just the date?
Just the date, please.
Sure.
August seventh.
How's our work?
August seventh.
Take a look. I'll be here.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Are you all right? You good? Andrew, are you around? Okay.
Yes?
Yes, August seventh.
Book it. August seventh. For those watching at home, this matter is going to be continued. There'll be further testimony to be put on the record. That date right now is scheduled for August seventh. There'll be no further notice. As I've told people before, look on the township website under the zoning board of adjustment. You can always look up the upcoming agenda and what's on the schedule. I want to thank Mr. Hopkin and Ms. Jennings for your testimony and for your counsel this evening. We look forward to seeing you come back after you work things out.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Have a great night.
Enjoy the beginning of the summer. We'll see you near the end. This does close out board the applications for the evening. Is there anyone here in the courtroom that wants to bring a matter before the board tonight? Everyone here is with the professionals, right? All right, I see none, so I'm going to close the general public comment. If that's okay, Mr. Dusty?
That's on the...
Okay. Board members, absent any comments? Left, right? Our next meeting, Maureen, is?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth?
Yes, May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, we'll meet again. Someone to move for an adjournment?
Ms. Testaverde.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We stand adjourned.